The planning board meeting, January 24th. Start with the previous meetings minutes they were distributed. We have two meetings minutes worth.
No, we.
Just one.
Oh, that's right. We have 13 and laws.
Yeah, but this is the first ones for it was December what?
13.
December what?
December 13th.
Good evening. There are no issues with the December 13th, 22, 2022 meeting?
Paul's had a couple little edits that I fractured and version that were sent home today.
Their motion to approve minutes as edited as amended, so move. I'll second that discussion, any discussion. Paul is in favor of approving the 12, 13, 20, 22 minutes, say aye.
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 Claire?
Aye.
That is your names. Uh, now a treasury report.
Oh, we have the other minutes.
You have?
On the ones that all carries circulating.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. For my last.
I couldn't find any type was on it. It really bothered me.
Uh, January 10 minutes. Okay, is there a motion to approve those as distributed?
I would move to accept.
So any discussion on the minutes? Oh, the favor of accepting, if say aye.
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 Aye. I'll say aye, Margaret?
abstain. I wasn't here.
Four to four to zero?
Because I think the law says that if you're not at a meeting, you can still vote on it. So you can vote on it, but you never have to.
And you can still not vote on it, whatever you want, if you feel like.
I voted on it.
My four to zero is good. Uh, now as far the, there is a new budget. Uh, I don't know if Joe's on the call, he's upstairs.
He's in the, yeah, for a second meeting.
Um, but is that something we could, Margaret is our treasurer and we haven't got, I did, it is submitted. I think it is approved. I've approved it. I don't know if it's come back from Joe yet, but that's the official. Was one thing that was missing on it, wasn't there one?
There's something missing. Not missing. Clerk salary. The clerk salary, as you'll know, I just circled it versus this is, oh, I just had the original ones. I think it actually is in there. Um, but yeah, that very last page was the one I think they got circulated last time.
Yeah.
Along with that, that one I think says a bottom line of about 30,000.
Yes, 30.
And the new one you're looking at is 33,000. That 3,000 was an additional, that was added to the clerk's potential salary. Um, so obviously we, um, we haven't nailed down that yet because we.
Well, can we, is there a potential clerk to go with potential salary?
There is, yes. We hopefully will have somebody hired by the end of this week.
Oh, fantastic. Um, so need to get all this information tomorrow when we have a, uh, whatever the budget's gonna be. If you're the treasurer.
Sure.
Do we need to vote on the budget or are we just still, I mean, it doesn't sound like we've got it in stone yet, right?
This is it, I think.
Okay.
What you had last time, I think you held off last meeting. There was a general consensus for it. I thought that my feeling of the board is that you didn't want to take a formal vote. Vote, but everybody was okay with it. Um, and then Tom just had an outstanding question that he think he clarified with Joe about, again, the clerk's salary.
And that's what that is, and I, I, I think we should vote on. I would move that we approve the budget as submitted. All right. To the. And this is going to the, uh, we'll give this to the town manager, with this town manager. Okay, discussion. And so our budget's up 10%. That normally doesn't happen. Um, let's move into the 3,000 that I just mentioned.
Yeah.
That's because we're getting more hours, hopefully.
From 15 to 20 or something like.
Correct.
Everything else is level.
Okay. And we usually give money back, so 10% increase is different for us. We just have, we never spend our budget years. All right, been voted second until we get sued.
Way over.
Yeah. Well, who's in favor of approving the budget?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Margaret?
Aye.
And I will say I make it names. The annual report. Yes, I have, I have looked at that for all of the board, but I don't know if you guys all agree.
So we looked at it last time and we missed to carry review and no comments, absent objection by Mr. Bohan and Mr. Davidson. I think you guys wanted to look at it. Mr. Davidson will submit the annual report, so.
That's what it is. Right. There was no need for motion on that, it's already been done. And what else we got? You have other stuff?
Yeah, I got a few things under the planner's report. Um, first thing I had was the town council advice from 5G, but we can get into that if you prefer. Um, for the agenda, I know that we have the discussion on that. Um, oh, relative to your budget, the CM, CMRPC invoice. Um, we got, uh, for the amount of $3,063. That was for CMRPC to come in and be planner for a little while in the absence of a planner. So that was slated to get paid out of the planning board's budget, 5113. The accounts on that, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that and okay with that before that goes through.
And that was slated even though the service was for, um, although we're in the fiscal year.
Right.
Never mind.
Who's signing off on it? Oh, three minutes. Okay. At least three minutes. Not just the chief? Not that. Not a voter. It's a bill from.
Yeah.
I have no sense. Okay, same thing as what's hard with some.
An update from the zoning board. Uh, they denied the 130 South Street variance petition. So I think it's likely that you'll see that come forward to this board as.
What was their reason?
A lack of hardship.
That's one we talked about a lot last time.
Yeah. Like I was telling Mike before the meeting, I think if they want to get the reduced frontage lot and it looks like there's a lot, a lot of people that would like to see that happen. I think there's a path forward, but they were, they were getting the variance on the wrong lot. You know, the var, if they were to get the variance on the reduced frontage lot, uh, they were seeking, to seek it that way. And, you know, my suggestion, and the other board members may agree or disagree, was they, they get an application in front of this board. So there's no if, ands, or buts with their intent. Because a lot of the, a lot of the issue was what's, what's their intent here? So there's an application and then, and we open up the public hearing and we say, well, obviously you need variance. Then we send them over to the ZBIA and then they can hear. Then there's something before this board, the intent is clear.
Yep.
Uh, they're not trying to get a variance on the conforming lot, right? That stays.
Your variance, yeah, tip of the. So if you're 70 foot right away, 70 foot frontage that you need to get in there, it might be 65.
Right, exactly.
You know, but that's, that's your variance and not, and now, but you've already cut out a 240 foot, 80,000.
Yeah, understood. But in this case, the, the reduced frontage lot, which, you know, it wasn't even clear that that was their intent, you know. But that would, yeah, that would be my suggestion to be. Yeah, I see what you're saying. I, I think regardless that, um, and I can, I can pass that along to them if they reach out again. But I think, I think, um, it's likely that this board will see a definitive subdivision plan filed, um, to try and get, um, you know, some sort of road to some sort of standard.
Yeah, please recommend on behalf of the chair, if nobody else, uh, come through the preliminary process first. It's, uh, it's cheaper. You flush out all of the issues without going through.
Yeah.
An intensive, you're, yeah, there's a whole bunch of stuff in the definitive that is, you don't want to go through if you don't have. Sure.
Yeah. So they're gonna file the definitive to get, to get, to get approval to go forward with the large lot fronted, reduced frontage? Is that their plan? Or are they gonna go through with the subdivision now?
I think it's likely you'll see a subdivision without any requests for special relief, uh, whether a variance or a special permit. That's what I think is gonna happen.
That's, that's too bad.
It is. That's, that's probably not. Yeah.
The, yeah, the, I mean, the, the amount of miscommunication was just, you know, you know, just, I had never seen anything like it. You had, you had a member of the board's selectmen saying, you know, we don't want to see more development here. And now they're, now they're going for the option with the most development. I mean, it's, it's insane. It's, you know, and they came before us twice for the reduced, uh, reduced frontage lot. The neighbors clearly want to read, they want the reduced frontage lot, you know, it would fit nice. Other than the frontage, you know, would fit nice into the reduced frontage bylaw. You know, it's, it's frustrating to me that, um, you know, that they may seek another path.
And the irony is we wrote the reduced frontage to do away with very small subdivisions. The town is to take over support a 500 foot roof.
Right.
Just didn't make any sense to give that expense to the town and that.
I mean, they'll likely proceed with the buy right option is, is I think what they're looking at. Probably out of frustration. Yeah. So.
That's too bad.
Um, the MBTA communities interim compliance action plan, I had sent that out a little while ago. I just wanted to get, um, the board's sense of that, um, what I had put forward in that, in that document. I mean, it was pretty, it was pretty light in what we actually had to put in that form. I mean, the biggest ticket item as I saw was, um, creating the core team is what this document wanted. Says briefly describe other members of the core team, uh, developing the multifamily zoning district. I put in, uh, that it'll basically be the planning board members. Obviously you are, um, in the planning board, so any and all zoning changes will come through this board regardless. But I thought it was important that this board be in on pretty much any and all discussions that were pursuant to this, this new law. Um, along with town planner, town manager. Um, uh, I saw that there is a liaison to the planning board via the board of selectmen. I don't know how active that is, but if that's something, then yes, include, include that member of the board of selectmen. Um, uh, and technical support through CMRPC, um, and, you know, as needed sort of thing. But that was what I suggested as the core team that. I listed a couple of just objectives that I, they, they wanted us to, or want to make to describe any relevant strategies, goals, object, or objectives. Uh, and the work that has to be done to date. Um, and I just combed through the 2005 master plan as well as, um, the 2012 housing production plan. And just listed what are the goals that I felt were relevant to this. Preliminary strategies that was optional, so I opted to not fill that out yet. And then I, uh, there was just a, a basic, um, timeline that I filled out. That was basically, you know, I show us this complying with basically the statutory deadline of December of, uh, 2025.
Question on the core team and the planning board be after I. Are we the right ones? What? We're gonna be the.
As opposed to the ZBIA?
If somebody comes in with any plan on the land that's been zoned, we would be the deciding, we would be the great rating authority.
But also zoning changes have to go through us, right?
Are we not restricting ourselves if we're on the committee to determine, um, is there any? Conflict? If, if you're on a committee to decide what, what to present to the planning board and you're a planning board member, doesn't it give you, just give you, just give you more information that you can be? Or do you, or just to give you a, you don't get the whole run, you don't get the input? I mean, just like sort of the large lot frontage reduction bylaw, you know, we, we can't, you know, this board was the one that put it forward and we came up with it. It couldn't, I thought you were gonna ask whether it should be us or the ZBIA just because it's zoned. I think we're, we're gonna deal with.
But for the board, there's.
They're relieved from zoning more than going.
And we're the, we're the planning entity and this is a big planning issue. They just, they just act on like we, you know, what the town wants to be. And they create the zoning to suit it, whereas we're the ones that actually do the planning for the town. So we would come up and we'd want this area, we want to dislodge and the ZBIA would make it so. So I think that that's the real difference. So I think it definitely has to be us. The ZBIA is reactive.
The, uh, the question is, it's seems to imply that it's a fait accompli that there's gonna be something before town meeting. Uh, what if this board or this committee, besides it's not a good fit for the town, then what? Uh, I mean, I mean, this is. You're out of compliance with the state law, so you lose funding opportunities. You can't apply for, oh, um.
Mass works that's town floor.
No, exactly. I mean, this is an order of magnitude above the typical density that we allow.
Right, right.
An order of magnitude.
Yeah.
That's pretty, that's a big number. So it's not obvious to me that it's gonna be perceived as a good tip.
Either, either through the committee or town.
But I think what, what he did was by submitting his plan, you just stay, you stay in the thing.
Oh, yeah.
And then we come up with a, you know, we work on doing it. And I think if we decide that this is a bad idea, um, and then, or a town meeting doesn't, then we go out of compliance at the date of, that we have to have something by. But I don't think that impacts who should be on the, the strategy team. I think that that's a possible outcome, just like a possible outcome is we might think it's the best thing since sliced bread. Tell me you could still vote it down, we don't know. This is just coming up with the strategy.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, if, if for some reason you didn't want the planning board to be the ones at the helm, I mean, you could, you could. Um, the planning board has the ability to, to create subcommittees, I think. If not, maybe go to the board of selectmen.
I believe any elected board can start it, but the elected board has to hold its meetings through the planning board, has to run everything through.
Sure.
Planning board, but yes, they can.
I like it being honestly the planning board because there's a huge, I mean, it is spreading the responsibility, but there is a huge, um, learning curve. I mean, for folks that don't understand planning, that don't understand, you know, what this is about. And I think that it's good to consult with like the CONCOM and, you know, have, you know, input from different boards. But I think when you're talking about a board committee, which is what we're talking about, you're talking about who's driving the bus, who's not, who's owning.
Well, and if I look past other ways that we've done it, let's say cell towers and stuff. You've, you've taken a five or 10 experts in the field of the citizenry and then they have, they've convinced the members of the board. Um, rather than the, the board being the five experts and having people come in to us one at a time and talk to us. We ask the questions. If we're the driving force, where are asking the questions? I don't know.
Or, or people, or we, we basically, um, you know, I would assume that this would be us again, driving it since we understand planning. And then having people come in and tell us what, you know, to advise. You know, we have advisory folks, but what we're talking about, we're not saying that the strategy committee is going to just sit in a dark room and come up with plans. You know, I think what we're talking about is, I always talk about who's driving the bus. And I definitely think it'd be the planning committee. I think when you start getting people with political agendas and stuff like that, and that's gonna get you no dice.
Is it gonna be done as part of a planning board meeting or is it gonna be a separate, uh, people meeting, uh, site?
I would, I would suggest, and you know more, but, um, I would suggest that it be part of, it's a process. It's many planning board meetings and many, um, you know, probably separate meetings because you have other people that are on this, you know. You know, the planner and other folks are gonna be on this strategy, this core strategy group. So I assume people on that core strategy group and then we'll also be at this meeting.
All right, so it sounds like the, the word, the board's gonna do it and we're gonna give our information to you and you can give us the planners update every second and fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, you're also on. You're, you're on, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and obviously anything that's done outside of the planning board relative to it, you know, as, just like this, there was, uh, this was, the form was requested that the town planner fill this form out. But obviously I'm running it through the planning board for obvious reasons. Um, so yeah, no, uh, and the purpose of this is, this is interim compliance, so I'll submit this by January 31st. And that don't mean that we are still in compliance with state law. That means we are still eligible for those funding sources that I mentioned, mass, Mass Works being the big one, but there's like two others that I'm forgetting.
If you, if you cost this out, uh, and say, all right, it's gonna, uh, we're gonna lose this much in funding. But if we allow 10 lots per acre and we do for five, that impact on schools, police, fire and, and, uh, town services is more than we're actually gonna make in, or lose in the thing.
Potentially.
It goes down. If anybody can prove which is which, that's, that's to me what's, you have to prove that it's, it's gonna be a benefit to.
But right now, we're looking, I, I, right now we have the, um, grants, the, the Mass Works grant in the queue for the sewer project. So keeping us in the queue.
So that.
Before that, we had zero.
Yeah.
Mass Works.
We haven't gotten any of the grant.
Margaret?
Oh, I was, Kathy just pointed out what I was going to point out, that we're, we need to stay in the queue if, and I guess my question would be, if we fall, if we are grant, if we're given that grant, but we then don't comply, do we lose the grant? You know, I, I think that there's, we will need to know where we stand there, so. Because that's gonna create a bigger problem with governor's landing, so.
Right, right. I would need all those answers, yeah.
Yeah, I was under the impression that we will know if we're awarded the grant this year and that we will stay eligible until 2026. So we damn well better be able to spend the money before 2026. But the other thing that, you know, comes up is that the new governor has indicated that she, they may end up, you know, to force communities to comply because that's basically what they want to do, is that they may start denying anything, like earmarks or anything to communities that aren't, you know, shouldering, I'm doing air quotes here, their fair share.
Yeah, if they start denying highway money.
Yeah, so, you know, yeah, you know, so I think that we also need to look, ask, when we're looking at the cost, you know, benefit. I mean, I expressed before, I agree with, you know, people's reticence because I don't, I think a town should determine, you know, what it wants to be and what it wants to look like and what its destiny is. But I think Tommy said a couple of meetings ago that the reason the stuff is coming up is because, you know, towns don't want to have, you know, especially low income, medium income housing. And they come up with all sorts of strategies to prevent it, so.
40B.
Yeah, 40B.
I think it had hot committee makes, yeah, a certain amount of sense and maybe a citizen or two, uh, you know, yourself, a member of the planning board. Part of the board of selectmen, you know, a five member committee or something like that, that's worked in the past.
Sure. I'd like to, uh, we might even have to go to the end of the meeting, uh, but I do want to get through the, uh, the agenda items first. The governor's landing has requested a contingency by both ladies. They have, they have, I did get the report from our reviewing engineer, from peer review, and, uh, if some behalf questions to answer. I don't know if any, please get an update on that. Is anybody in the line? From governor's landing?
I would move to continue, oh, have we all?
Yeah.
I'm gonna open the public hearing. I'm gonna suspend the regularly scheduled meeting and open the continued public hearing for governor's landing. And they have requests for continuance until February 14th, 23. Make that at 7:05.
I would move that we continue this hearing, this public hearing, till February 14th, 7:05 PM.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just a quick point. Um, I am not gonna be able to be at that meeting, so I haven't missed a meeting yet, so I can well enroll myself, um, and still be active.
And you have the recording you can listen to be available? All right, any other further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, continue the hearing, signify by just saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Five to zero. Um, we would be, uh, open the suspended regularly scheduled meeting and, uh, want to open a, uh, public hearing for East Street Estates, so suspend the regularly scheduled meeting again. East Street Estates has requested, um, a continued public hearing and a decision deadline when it's the shot clock. Is there a motion to accept both, uh, the decision deadline extension?
The question, when did they ask to continue the hearing until? Cause the shot clock is the 28th and I just want to talk about what's in, what's in tonight.
28th of February. So when do they want them?
Kevin is on.
Oh, good.
Ah, yes, um, I think the, I think based on hearing, the, the calculation should be very shortly. Um, I think the 14th would be a good update. And, uh, and I think at that time I'll have a good sense of whether, uh, whether we should give notice at the, at the following hearing. And or by that time I'll know whether we need to continue and potentially we do the first meeting in March to give Stan Tech time and, and be ready to, uh, to do the final presentation.
And notify the abutters, resident the abutters we were notifying as well.
Yeah, actually saying, we've been kind of cruising along. So once we think that we're, we're, they're really ready to go, they've agreed to give another full notice to the, uh, abutters so that the abutters have a full and fair opportunity to review the plans as they stand now, not as they stood way back when.
Who was saying?
When was the date requested for the shot clock, the 28th of February?
Yeah, so Kevin just did, I want him to do, which is, which was clarified. So it would be moving the hearing to the 28th and the shot, excuse me, the hearing to the 14th and the shot clock to the 28th. The last time we had them both button up to today, which doesn't give us much.
But the question is, the 14th, that would mean that we would notify, we need to notify the abutters basically now for the 14th.
I think Kevin said no, that he would, that they thought that by the 14th would know whether we were.
Correct, so, so yeah.
The 28th isn't gonna be enough time for the shot clock because then we'll need the 28th with the abutters present to rehear the. Isn't that true?
We need more than the 28th, so that's, I think, we've got the request for the 28th, we've got a meeting before, before then. And at that meeting, I would say, do you want us to decide by the 28th? Or do you want us to schedule a, you know, we want to get notice out to the, you know, to the abutters and have a full hearing? And then we, we, I think the applicant would need to request a further continuance of the shot clock.
So meeting the 14th is just.
Just a continued hearing.
Just to continue the hearing, but, and they'll know that they'll have the updated calculations.
Oh, an update for that.
But the, but the hearing itself with the abutters will be moved to the 28th. This is the upcoming one on the 4th.
The 28th.
At least the 28th, yeah.
So we should, I would move that we continue this public hearing to February 14th.
Yeah.
At 7:15 PM.
Yeah. And I want to go.
I can do them together and I would, uh, move that we, uh, agree to the request to extend the shot clock through February 28, 2023.
Okay, second for discussion?
Second.
All right, any, uh, discussion on that?
Just my same point, I'll be absent, but I have not missed a meeting on this, so I'll do the same thing.
And since neither one's gonna be buttoned up at that meeting, I'm confident your experience will be. And move, I'm gonna second it to continue the public hearing for East Street Estates till 7:15 on the 14th of February. And also to extend the shot clock to the 25th, the decision deadline to the 28th of February. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Margaret? Edition unanimous. So we'll close that public hearing with regularly scheduled meeting and discuss the amending, the wireless bylaw, and the climate change technology.
Okay.
Um, and we did get the letter from saying that, uh, it may not be a zoning bylaw that solves the problem, but there is a zoning part of this, I think we can discuss. There's a zoning part of this. Go ahead.
So you, you got the email with all the signs that you wanted.
Yeah.
And you saw, um, here, there's a packet with some of those items and a few other things and some not, some that, um, not everything in that packet is here, but.
Yeah. I can shoot Kathy.
Oh.
Sorry. Close.
So the, the beginning, you know, that New Hampshire Commission made 15 different recommendations, but it was 17 pages and that was, that was a lot of detail. But the first couple of pages go into the main points. And the main points I would hope would lead you folks to think that there is sufficient concern about the health effects of it. And that we, there's just a lot that we don't know. So they've studied it for years and we don't have the luxury of doing that and we don't have the ability to do that. So we're gonna rely on people who have, I'm hoping. And, um, they make all kinds of warnings, you know. You'll probably notice that they think school public libraries should be high hardwired or have optical connections. They recommend that fiber optics be used for. They, they don't go into the details of why in the summary, but later on we'll see a statement from the, uh, retired head of Microsoft in Canada. Who gives many reasons why everybody should have fiber and towns are becoming, they're making that. Towns are even beginning to do their own wiring so they can have it because. As we've been told, we can't get it here.
I think it's on the poles too, and we actually have fiber optics on the poles.
And I think we have some of our town buildings.
Yeah, and it just isn't turned on.
Right, but in terms of getting it to and through the premises, which is what the best thing is, that that's going to require some work. Turns out long runs less expensive and I guess A N T is working in that direction already. It's it's faster than, five G will never be as fast as the right connections or as secure or as reliable or as it can't be hacked. You know, so it's better in every way.
I had a, um, I have a wire to my house that. And I looked out and they were three blocks away from my driveway. And this was just just before, uh, remember when it was legal, so I don't know what happened to them, but there was something in my driveway saying, this isn't the road. It's not supposed to be here, I said, well, we just put it to your house. And, uh, it gets, uh, five, I got five, I got the wire. Uh, right up to the house, because they went to, they went to the top line. And they said, geez, we got to stop, well, this must be the road, and then she came right to the house. So as soon as we turn on. This is all, the whole town has this technology, um, my problem. Why, why is New Hampshire, if I may add, why is New Hampshire leading force in this? I would think somebody from the south would be. But the problem would come up from the south, it's more heavy. Why would New Hampshire be a leading voice, you know, five G?
I just think they had a congressman who was on top of it. Right, and he brought it and they said, let's study it, and I think they were very surprised by the results they came up with, they they thought it was not going to be a big deal. And after studying it, they went, it's very big deal, so they stopped it.
Because it's been in, it's been in like New Jersey and New York a lot longer than it's been in the northeast, the higher northeast, I wonder. Does any, uh. Further medical studies on it from down there?
I I have a question for the panel, um. It was my impression that the state, um, was investing a lot of money. Into fiber optic cabling, um, especially out in the west western part.
Well, it's my understanding, yeah.
But that's just limited to the rural areas out west, so this is one area where we're not considered west.
Yeah, that's a good point, I, because that was happening when I was in grad school.
Um, at U Mass, and yeah, there was a big push, I remember.
Um, to get fiber optics installed like in and around, you know, Holyoke's a city, but like.
South, yeah, all those good towns.
But yeah, I don't know about. South.
But it's the provider that we don't have.
Like, yeah.
It's we have, we're wired for, we don't have a provider to get through.
How can we be wired for it when they haven't applied? Don't we have things in our eyes on it?
I thought they came, I thought they had a fiber optic cable. It's on our poles, we have a fiber optic cable on our poles, we just don't have anybody to.
You're talking about the five G, the small cells, we may have fiber optic cables, I don't know.
I'm talking, if we didn't use five, you mean went to fiber optics. Aren't we all set up for that instead of going to a new technology that we don't understand? So yeah, please begin.
Right, that's something to definitely be looked into, that would be great. That would be wonderful. So, um, as part of this study, they looked, one of the recommendations, number seven. Is that there should be setbacks from residences, businesses and schools. And I would also submit that it should be from playgrounds and daycare centers and senior houses. And so, um, there's quite a bit in appendix K about that, but one of the things that was in what we sent you was a video by. One of the doctors on the commission and he talks and and on on the very next pages of the document.
If I can just, uh, number seven. Um, that is with respect to rights of way. So that would be a point that is out of our jurisdiction?
That's what our town council's saying, but I, for all the respect, think is not accurate. And the reason I think that is because I talked to everybody who knows anything about this in the field and nobody's done it the way she's recommending. Or has heard about it and the head of Americans Responsible Technologies said she thinks we'd get sued if we did that, but there, which is recommended.
But through, uh, selectmen control the right of way. Distance town, huh?
And what I, what I, his, this day, I downloaded it on. Page, I don't know, four, the planning board has authority to plan per, grand permits for wireless or not, it can decide to hold a public meeting or not. It can decide on the criteria and need to make a decision, there's pretty much full power to make these decisions on behalf of the public. And then lists below it, the the different things that could be done. And, um, the fourth one, the advocate must prove the documented dry tests and drop call reports. That the antenna is required in that location to fix a gap in coverage. So, which we were talking about a little earlier, apparently we have a development going in where they don't have very good cell service, and I know North Ab is like classically terrible to cell service. There are places in town where really, we really need this.
Yeah.
There are places in town that we really don't. And I know I live down here and we, I, there's never a problem, never had a problem, never had drop call there, you know what I mean?
We were told that if the cell tower was twenty feet taller, which we didn't allow, they could restore all the spots in town.
Well, that's one of the things, you know, they come into towns and they tell you you need maybe two hundred feet and the reality is some of these places only need three in the whole town. But they're telling you you need a hundred twenty of them, and the reason is the infrastructure companies. Are putting them up, not the cell phone companies, and they rent them to the cell phone companies and they get rent every single month and they're making a fortune and I don't really want to pay that. And I don't think our taxpayers should either. To destroy our health on top of it.
But with respect to rights of way, I just, as we all know, you know, the the opinion of town council. And that's, you know, we're for legal advice, that's who we're beholden to, and if it gets to town meeting floor. A question comes up, that's, that's town meeting is going to be listening to town council, so that's something that needs to get figured out sooner by more than later.
Yeah, we're also still subject to federal law and the telecommunications act says we cannot. Implement law, you know, I laws that say we're doing this because of perceived or real even health. Problem and, you know, you've you've listed. And the materials you sent us, you know, the New Hampshire five G commission. They issued their report in twenty twenty, and Hampshire didn't implement the report.
They're implementing it parts of it as they go.
Okay. And then you you cited the, you know, there was one town that that shut down a cell tower. That, you know, the the neighborhood. And then as soon as they did that, the cell tower company filed suit in federal court. And the town lifted the cease and desist order because they they were in violation of the telecommunications act, so I don't know how we. Propose a bylaw. That every, all the reasons you're giving us is exactly the reasons we can't. I, I mean, I just don't know how, if if it says, you know, thou shalt not. Like right now, we, with existing cell towers, there are certain things we can't do, um, if they come in and they say they want to change the equipment. From, you know, a blue antenna to a red antenna, we have to let them if it's within the envelope, we can't just say, well, we don't like. That, so we're going to make you go through the whole process again, there's a federal law that says we can't do that. And the nineteen ninety six law says we cannot. Have a bylaw that holds up if we say it's based on. Health concerns and that's everything in here, it's all health concerns.
Uh, moratorium, do we, is there any town that successfully put in a moratorium so that we can figure out?
I found that, um. Sheffield, thank you, they, uh, that was, um, but that it does not pass yet, that needs to go to their town meeting this spring, there. There's citizens petition to, um, pass a moratorium on five G. Uh, but again, that has not passed because it's yet to be voted on.
And it still has to pass the attorney general's office, which.
Right.
Doing this, who used to work at my firm, is all, you know, is. Relatively tough on bylaws, not like we asked, what am I urging an illegal bylaw, but, you know, back in the day.
But this looks more like a general bylaw than a zoning bylaw. Bylaw, bylaw. Still goes through the attorney general's office.
Can I, I, can I address a couple of things with you here too? Um, in Pittsfield, they're going to court, so it's not.
It's dismissed. It's dismissed within, um. Very quickly.
Well, something happened since then, I think they've been, they have a court date for the February fourteenth of something, so I'll check it. Um, a number of things are happening around the state and around the country, there are many towns that have bylaws that have setbacks in them. So there's some in Massachusetts, there's some in New York, there's some in California, there are, there are many. And I know that it looks like they're in violation of the federal law. But there are, we have a whole history of laws that are maybe needing to be changed. And this may be one of them, especially since they have not, since they were sued and found to be wanting. Required to reinvestigate it, look at the signs and they haven't done it because they say they don't have the resources of this staffing. And and the World Health Organization is looking at it again, this. We're on the cusp of everybody suddenly realizing because the information started to come out that there are problems. It also can have an impact on what the town looks like and it can have an impact on property values, especially regarding people's health, so there's going to be, that's going to happen too. But, um. In some towns they're looking at moratorium and in some towns they're asking their town boards to write a letter to the F C C to say, please. Do what the lawsuit asked you to do and study this. In some towns found with just, uh, pest, I think it's a bylaw mandating fiber, there's a lot of different things that are happening. That, um, so what I think, um, I want to ask you folks, now, if you look, if. If you look at that chart, you'll see that. The rate of cancer in the general population is about thirty two and one and a half or ten thousand. Near self towers, it goes up to forty five if they're only a hundred meters away. And it starts to go down. At five hundred meters, it's significantly down, it's still not all the way down, you have to get a thousand meters, which would be very, very far. These are, these are meters, so that's far. I know that if we would put that in, it would effectively prohibit it in town and we can't do that, and that's really what I think the F C C is saying. But if we could make our bylaw to make it five hundred feet, I think that they should have no trouble putting in five G. We could make, if we can put it that far from residences, I think it would make it less likely that it would be harmful. And protecting our citizens, which is like hoping what we want to do. And, um, so we had in our, the one that we submitted the last night, seven fifteen, maybe we'd make it five hundred, I had been told that we wouldn't get sued if we make it five hundred feet. So maybe that's what we should try and let's leave it to the citizens and see what they want to do.
But this is just personal thing, and before arguing whether it's harmful at five hundred feet or three hundred, I don't want the thing here at all. If you're arguing that it's, you're saying it's okay, you only got this much of a chance to die at just three hundred, but you bet. I don't want to hear it all, you know, I don't want to take that chance that maybe you're off by a hundred meters.
You want fiber optic, I can tell.
I want. I want, I want the state, I want the state.
You have fiber optic, so what are you complaining about?
It's not hooked up, we don't have, we don't have. We don't have anybody that, what's fiber optic, it's up and it's only, your only cable.
They put it by Act by the state there, right?
Yeah, the whole town, the whole town is wired for it, my house, my house is wired for it, we're supposed to put it in the street.
But I mean, with this graph, it's showing a statistical correlation, but is it causal? You know, because the same thing can be said for electromagnetic fields.
That's what they say, basically.
So.
Yeah.
With electric power substations, for example, and that's, that's been a nonstarter, so. You know, when I see graphs like this, you know, what the question would be, are you showing that is, is the science proved a causal relationship? Or just a sta- a statistical relationship?
So what I would say is to look in that. New Hampshire report in appendix K, because it gives a whole explanation of it.
No, I'm just, uh, mainly saying that rhetorically.
But I know what you mean. I understand what you're saying.
And I wonder if the, by, another question is cell tower, what what is the makeup of the cell towers, the twenty carriers on it, just five carrier?
I think up to there to be able to handle up to four.
Is this, is this a physical fee, is that a certain size, some towers that even if this one? Carrier on?
There won't be one carrier, well, it depends, I guess that we only have one carrier in our town, is that correct? Yeah.
Interesting stuff.
One cell carrier, no, I think we go, one cell carrier.
No, there's one. Power, but there's, there's three on it, three or four in it.
Right. There's one cable provider, and the thing with cell towers too, I mean, you can sell, sell folks, sell companies do rent each other's facilities too, so you might have. You know, you see the, all the commercials, right, you you might have, uh. Uh, but Bill's phone might be running through the Verizon carrier, even though he doesn't have Verizon, I do. But you can't do that with cable.
So the people that put up the, the tower on Pratt Hill, they're getting rent from all those carriers.
Correct.
Okay, what's the next step for the board, what would you, what do we, what's in it for us, should we be doing?
I'd like to see what happens with some of these other towns.
Yeah, and I'm not. As a, as a planning board member, I I wouldn't be. In favor of putting a bylaw up. Similar to what we're seeing. It's, I just don't think it complies with the law and I, I, I wouldn't want to take the time to do it. And, you know, Pittsfield. One of the reasons that they dropped out, you know, they dropped out in June and said. We're not funding the eighty two thousand dollars town council's looking for, so. There's a cost to being wrong. You know, they had already, so.
From what that attorney Campanelli says, he's done, he says seven thousand cases of this across the country. And that even if you were to lose the case, there would never be a cost to the town, the cost of town and you had to put the tower up. It was, there'd never be any financial cost, and I, I gave you.
That's the cost of town council, I mean, we would ask them. And now we, we pay.
I I guess he's saying if we violate a federal law.
Oh, still, you know, it's so, yeah.
That it's unlikely that we would be liable to the. The applicant for damages, I'm not sure that that's true either. And I'm also not sure that somebody did seven thousand cases.
I think that.
He has a consideration, attorney, that's what he does, and he's, and you have his telephone number in here, because he gives it and he says board members can call, it's, it's on the bottom of this page. The also in May, the Department of Commerce came out and said. That. Priority funding will be given to projects that provide fiber optic connections from end to end all the way through the premises, it's the way we're going. And I just don't want to get caught with. Them coming in and and giving us what we shouldn't have.
I think the best thing we can do for you is to do everything we can for you. So that will include. Both the selectments route of if this is going to be, if any application of five G goes to this selectment. That's what we have multiple help to meet decide and is decided for us, maybe it goes to the selectman and not a planning board, this isn't a regulated. Uh, site plan hearing or special permit by the planning board, this is a public way, public access thing through the selectment. We want to give you that kind of protection there, so we can probably start that process.
Okay, yeah.
Um, and the second thing is get information on any successful moratorium. Results. To give us some clues to how we can regulate it, if it's going to go through the planning board's site plan or sharing the process. How are we going to do it? Taking what falls, we're not, we're not going to, we don't want to do this just to get dismissed or overturned in, in, in a week. And and good, Gary, we need to get everybody's. We need to feel comfortable that it's going to be a planning board matter. We're told that a selectment's matter, it's not going to be a planning. But I think it's both, I think it can be a zoning issue. With the planning board and it can be a selectment's issue and maybe that's how you do it by.
And and if we could ask the town council to tell us other towns that have done it the way that she's suggesting that it be wrong.
Okay, I'd ask the planning board, uh, um. Because the, those things need to go through the planning board and then via town manager. Um, would you like me to research into that, so via town council, what have been successful bylaws or?
Can you make a suggestion? Um, because town council costs money, um. Paul seems to, I mean, between the two of you, you know, it's like the Kate, you said one woman in your office is working on this.
No, she's in the attorney general's office, she was with me, that way back in the day.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, I was just wondering if it's a way that you can do it for free.
Ain't nothing free.
I know, I know.
I'm just, I, I, all, all it's taken me is just Google searching, you know, and.
We could find just bylaws that the community, that's communities have passed.
Oh, we have discovered false ones, yes.
Yes, so they want those samples, fully in half, actually. The, the issue is, is that.
Fiber optic cable, yeah.
Town council, when I spoke, or wouldn't recommend proceeding as any of those towns did. Town council, when I spoke, or wouldn't recommend proceeding as any of those towns did. Ones that have passed zoning bylaws.
Did the AG's office approve the Sheldon Falls bylaw?
I think so. It's been in since 2021.
All right, so I would ask that you two get together for the, the, the selectment part of it and the dial part of it. And come back to us with, answer any questions you can that we've, you've heard tonight. As far as, as, like I said, we don't want to, if it's illegal and we can't do it, let's find another way.
Okay. If I may, there is, there is a, you can regulate 5G through a zoning bylaw. The issue is it's not going to apply to the streets, obviously, per town council because a zoning doesn't apply to, to public ways. So that was the argument that she presented, which is why she recommended poll hearings to the board of selectmen. So you, you can institute a zoning bylaw. It's going to be relatively ineffective because that's where 5G wants to locate, is on the, the, the public ways. But there may be a situation, and we don't have, this is sort of operating in the dark as far as this is concerned, but private property, you know what I mean? If there's, if there's a large industrial complex or something that, that wants to bring in 5G for some reason, you can, you can regulate it on private property in that way. So I just want to, I don't know how real of an option that is, obviously, but I wanted to just.
Well, let me give you a similar example that we go through now, of streetlights. When you go to, when you pull in a subdivision, you tell us the design of the, the planning board will tell you the design of the, we proved the design of the law.
Yeah.
But the selectmen tell you where if, and where they're going to put, if any.
Yeah.
So you can come to the planning board for approval of that.
Yeah.
But if the planning board say we don't want any lights there, it doesn't matter what you give to the planning board.
Right.
So it could be the same type of a thing where we decide the design and, but the selectmen decide the if.
That's pretty much, yes, in, in those terms, that's pretty much what the town council had suggested as far as the poll.
Then you can see both zoning and selectment processes.
And this sounds like design standards, which is like the small cell policies. Because another option town to join like Wellington and Concord and Bedford and all them, they're doing small cell policies which can be easily changed and they have design standards. And maybe we can work with board of selectmen for where and work with planning for how.
Perfect.
Okay.
Nice.
There'd be the Rosa Parks, the FCC would change that law. Thank you.
So we move on? Are there any other questions or comments? Wait for any other thing for the, for our town planner. Glad you're here.
Glad to be here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, one more thing on the planner's report, just very briefly. The zoning board wanted, wanted to look into increasing from three members to five members. And so I'm just mentioning that too because that's going to warrant a zoning bylaw change. So that'll be coming through this board. Yeah, it's in the zoning bylaw that they are three members.
All, all five appointed by the selectmen?
Mm-hmm.
And that's, so we need to put up, we need to think about a public hearing before the town meeting?
Yes.
So they want to do it quickly. They want to do.
Yeah, they want to, they want to be on the main town meeting.
Where are they going to find these two other people?
I was going to ask something.
All right, then we will have to. So let's put that on our next meeting agenda.
Public hearing?
We have to, the public hearing, we have to notify newspaper 14 and seven days prior to hold the public hearing.
So just a question, if we do it 14, if we do 14 days in advance, it won't be the next thing, we'll be being after, correct?
No, we need to, yeah, the date has to be further. You can do it 28th of March, 28th of February.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have a March planning board public hearing.
We're gonna have.
We should get the placeholder article before we set the public hearing, right? So we can say that we're talking about.
That's next meeting.
I agree.
Hopefully we'll have that by next meeting.
And the selectmen can sponsor a zoning article, so.
Yeah, there's, there's a good placeholder for that.
Maybe they want to write it.
Right, I assumed it was a placeholder already.
I, I will likely be writing it and I'll be giving it to you. Hold your, the public hearing inside if you want to. Only five.
Only five.
See, so the issue being that you need a unanimous vote for a three-member zoning board.
Special permit.
Yeah, special permit.
Not a variance. That's good.
Yeah.
And so if you had five, you just have.
I mean, you have nine, you have the four thing board, you need four out of five, all three.
Oh, really?
And you have two reported by the selectmen and this seven in large.
In that case, you need just a two-thirds vote for everything.
Yeah, and us is a majority of the elected members, not of the ones that show. All right, is that it for everybody? Do you have any comments, any issues?
I've got issues, but.
Tom, I think Kathy Taylor is trying to raise her hand here.
What?
I thought Kathy Taylor was trying to raise her hand.
I didn't see Kathy. I'm sorry. We are not in touch yet. Please, Kathy, go right ahead.
I put something in the meeting chat because Pittsfield is still dealing with the cell tower. It hasn't. It's in the paper lock and they're still going to court with it. So I do want to say that it's really cutting edge work that Lori's doing with towns. And I would hate for Upton to be out of the terms go 5G. You know, the, the companies that are making a lot of money off of this are just ramming things through. And I, I really, I just think, I appreciate that Lori's gone to all the, yeah, all the information together. And as a fellow citizen, I would like us to take a close look at this because there are concerns. But Pittsfield is, is, is still dealing with it. I know that was dismissed early in the, and I think we have to keep a close watch out to what's happening. And, you know, closely watch things because it's, it's on the edge of figuring out how to do it safely. That's all. Thank you.
I will thank you. And we are going to use a two-pronged approach. We'll use both zoning and, and, so it's very good. I will thank you very much. I will see you. Have a happy, see you on Valentine's Day.
See you on Valentine's.
Meeting adjourned.